Educating, Informing, Serving. FEC TV, Keeping Government Honest.
Step one, approval of the agenda. I have two corrections I'd like to make. One, as pointed out, we have the wrong date of the next meeting, so it's a minor thing. That's March 10th is what my calendar says on that. And the second thing is I'd like to add, after the next regular meeting announcement, executive session to discuss personnel matters. And that would be that piece. Regular minutes? You guys, question?
Yeah.
Under your town plan?
Mm-hmm.
The discussion of the land use map? Since it continues to generate discussion and controversy.
Yeah, and I oversay, because you emailed me about that, and obviously it was definitely going to be talked about. I was wondering if we were going to talk about it under public comment, or just wait until then?
I thought it was on the agenda.
Well, it's... Town plan was on the agenda.
And which it, to me, opens up any discussion, and this is definitely going to be one of them. It's just a matter of do we do it before or after the updates and reports, I guess. So, you guys here for the whole meeting, or just correspondence?
I'm here for the entire meeting.
Oh, okay.
And I also had the expectation that land use would be on the agenda.
Definitely will be, and we will discuss it. All right? And we end promptly at the third, correct? Always.
We'll sleep by time for Valerie.
Yes, this one as well. All right, so motion to approve the agenda with edits, and I put land use map under town plan.
Okay, so...
All in favor?
Aye.
Forward. Public comment? You want to hold it till the meeting, or you want something else first, or however you want to approach?
I guess I do now. First, I'd like to say, in the meeting that we had, where there was quite an open discussion, and you made a comment to me about when I said my interest in forestry, and you said, "Well, everybody has a different interest, and, you know, you can't write a plan that covers everybody's interests."
I don't remember...
Something similar to that. But my interest in forestry isn't just personal, but townwide interest in forestry, and it might be of interest to you to know that 65% of our land is in use value, and use value requires people to have active forest management. So, that automatically should make 65% of the land those people interested in forestry.
And I would add that I don't know anybody that lives in Grafton that doesn't have a real concern for the stewardship of our forests.
That's why it kind of bothered me, there was only a paragraph of forestry in the town plan. The other thing is, what I wanted to cover, we had already talked a little bit about before the meeting started, and that would be the Emerald Ash Bore, and I can talk about that now, or if you think your folks are going to...
Well, he's got the full input and...
If there's more of your folks, you think, expect one more, I'll wait, and then everybody can hear it.
I don't know if Eric didn't send me anything, he was not coming, and he's very good on attendance on the way.
I'll...
All right. Do me a favor, throw something at me, because I'm going to forget about it, and we're going to start proceeding ahead, kind of the thing. Other public comment for now, and I'm pretty flexible, if you want to speak up later, I'm not going to hold you to that, obviously. Updates and reports. Eric is not here, and he is our representative on the Wyndham Regional Commission, so I don't have anything from him at this point. I did send out, and I'm a believer, any email I sent with planning commission information on it is public information, and so for the community, the camera, others, I sent everybody here at the table, except for her, a four, five bullet, no, four, excuse me, email, because I did go down and have a meeting with John Bennett about a variety of issues about two or three weeks ago, and so, for the camera and for the record, under Wyndham Regional, let me see if I can summarize this. One deals with Chuck, who is evolving off the group, and what is our place, and what do we need, and my, I want a clarification, do we need somebody with a license, with a title, et cetera? And the answer was, no, there was no statute or standard for the planning commission. It can be a secretary, it can be a clerk, it can be a high school kid that knows how to write, if you just need minutes taken. With that said, I will say publicly, what I talked to John about is, we don't ask Chuck every day, every time for information, but having somebody here with a planner's background is imperative, in my opinion, because we do often have questions, and so, you've announced publicly, or just to me, you've got a tentative end date for us, of June 30th?
Fiscal year ends.
In the fiscal year.
What kind of pushed us to this line is that I'll be taking on additional responsibilities in the town of Rockingham. They elected to defund one of my colleagues, so my work plate is going to get busier.
So, we need to plan accordingly, hopefully for a transition, not look after he's gone.
Yes.
I'll make that real clear, so, and I'll make it open to everyone. The reason I have executive session is to discuss that personnel matter at that time, and then hopefully come up with a job description, and make sure we're all on the same page with that. Number two, dealt with the town plan, and zoning, and property assessments, and the town map, and those kinds of things, and again, my goal tonight is to find a date where we could put together some kind of expert panel, if you will, on the land use, to make sure everybody knows what they're supposed to know. Does anybody here know somebody named Jeens, spelled J-E-N-S, that works for the Wyndham Commission? I guess he is the statewide bio finder expert.
Yes, I've met him.
Okay, and John has said that he's talked to him, he'd be willing to come down, and if you want an expert to explain how the bio finder works, how the Wyndham Regional map works, how our map presently, but maybe not forever, obviously will work, he would be somebody to invite. Chris would come down if necessary, or come up, whichever it is. John would definitely be willing to come, and there may be some others, but later on, again, I'm just summarizing Wyndham Regional, I'd like to talk about what are we going to do on that, and we'll tie to this whole thing of what is the land use map going to look like. The survey is now on hold, from my point of view, I'm not sure where to go with it. We have money in our FY coming up account for a municipal planning grant. We have money in our account now for municipal planning grant, but the money we had to apply back in September. The new municipal planning grants aren't available until September, and deadline October 31st, I think?
Yes.
All right, but it's a short window. My plan was to see if we can get some grant money, and use that to implement the survey during the summer. Part of the reason is I'm available during the summer to do work, and use the money for what I keep calling as boots on the ground. Now, we're not going to be allowed to get any extra money until October. We can still move forward with some kind of survey in the summer, with zero dollars, which means the five of us will be implementing the grant, or the survey somehow, or we can wait and set some other timeline. What are your thoughts on that?
I think that we need more help than just the five of us are going to be able to do. Don't you?
Yes. How's that? But everybody's opinion counts, is why we're here. We can move forward, we have 90% of the survey put together, we'd have to finish it, and we could move forward with it. We have not talked about implementation, if we were going to do it ourselves, how would we do that?
Yeah, we thought if we had some professional help, we could put it in a format that could move forward with future surveys. It would be helpful doing it right the first time.
Well, not only that, I mean, we could send it electronically just fine by ourselves, maybe, somebody a little more skilled than I am, but...
Send either as a PDF, or as like a survey online?
Right, but that doesn't help the people who don't use the internet.
One of our goals was the biggest number returns as possible, and yet...
Yeah. I mean, if you could just make them available on a sign-out basis, I suppose, in town hall and the library, and not have to, but I don't think any of us have time to go knocking on doors.
How many copies would we need, and what's the expense of that?
There's been a point.
We don't have our budget, so...
Yes.
I'm very excited about the place you're in, because we have something that is near final, and would go into the grant application, and be a very strong statement that says, "Hey, we're ready to do this, but we need, you know, additional support." We've also talked about Grafton teenagers, somebody coming back from college, or in high school, and I have very recent experience now being in New Hampshire, where somebody young comes knocking on your door, asking a bunch of questions, you answer them, you're so excited that they're there, so it will help, I think, get some of our folks responding, who would otherwise see a computer request and deny that.
Well, how did Rockingham handle getting their survey out to the citizens of the municipality?
It was kind of like an all of the above sort of venture. Word of mouth, talking to people, I would, you know, I'd be at the recycle center, helping them out with the surveys, some people show their own initiative, you know, the ones that are very upfront, they tend to be critical, the ones that think things are going great, and they're the ones that you start, you have to talk to them, you have to, you know. So, you don't want to get selective availability, where you get this bias, so it really is all of the above, computer, in person, at sites, and door to door.
What are your thoughts?
Would we have the ability to recruit volunteers from the community? People who might be willing to assist?
We can always ask, and...
A survey subcommittee of the planning commission, just for the execution phase?
I don't know where high school kids are at, but all three of our high schools, Leland and Gray Bellas Falls, Anchester, I think still require forced volunteerism to graduate.
Community service.
Yeah. Sorry. Turn me on. And there may be kids, I think it's 40 hours or so a piece of...
I don't think Green Mountain currently has that requirement.
Oh, I thought it started. Maybe not. Things change, but we can look at that. So, do you want to, I'm hearing a little bit, are you wanting to do it this summer? Is that what I'm hearing, or what am I hearing, I guess? Heard something from you originally, and then maybe some other stuff.
Yeah, yeah. Well, it seems like we ought to be able to come up with some money from someplace. I just can't imagine that there isn't money somewhere in somebody's budget, in our budget even. Didn't we have some other money?
The money, and I don't have it in front of me, I believe we have $400 that we used as part of the matching grant, with the expectation that we'd use that towards, it's a 10% match, I believe, right?
Yes.
So, the idea was we were going to budget 4,000, and we'd have 400, so we do have 400 bars. That's about it. Don't forget printing costs.
Right, that's the only thing, actually, I think it has to cost a lot of money. Right?
We have some in-house capability in town offices, I mean, that could be an option.
You're talking, I mean, we still haven't, we're still at eight or nine pages, we have to, I would think whittle it down a little bit more, but eight pages, talking 500, 600 copies? I don't know the math on that.
Do you think that many would need to be hard copy?
I don't know.
Because I think, you know, we're talking 650 for total population, you know, you figure, I don't know what the cutoff for age is, you know, for teens, like we're going to do 13, 18, 16?
You could just put something in the Grafton news that just says, "Hey, you know, let us know, we'll electronically send you a version, or if you need a paper version, like, let us know, and..."
Well, we can have a link off the town website, theoretically.
Sure, but you have to have something that's proactive, that goes into everybody's, like, real mailbox, especially people who don't come into town hall often.
Right.
But it's so, if we put something in the Grafton news, I don't think anybody doesn't read the Grafton news in town.
You'd be surprised.
Yeah.
I mean, I assume the same thing, I'm always shocked when I talk to next door neighbors on both sides. Does this have to be an either or? You can do the survey in a minimal way, and if you don't have the penetration that you need, go for the grant, and have kids the following summer.
I guess I grimace at that, you're talking about like a survey light, and then a real survey?
No, no, you attempt a survey using the manpower you have, which is limited.
But if you wait till later, those that took one six months earlier, then take it again, or do you combine the two, or what's the plan?
Are you going to be able to track the responses? Are you going to know?
That's a concern.
Are you going to know that you heard from Al Sands, and then you don't need to go see Al Sands again?
It's one of the things, I was hoping to get some expert advice on how to do the most scientific data collection possible at some point. I don't know the answer to that.
I mean, I understand not knowing who you heard from. Some people would respond if they don't, if you can't track it, but if you can't track it, then you don't know who you've already heard from.
I think we have to track, yeah.
Well, that's funny, at some point it's not really scientific, it's just giving people who care the option, right, to weigh in. We just want to know, what do you think about land use? What do you think about these things? Like, we don't have a good way to reach out to the people who can't make it to meetings, or don't come to meetings, and we just want to have, like, the broadest possible input, but I don't think we have to go chasing people.
And realistically, what was, as far as percentage of the population that...
10%, it was like 12%. Yeah. And that was throwing everything at the wall, seeing what sticks.
Wow.
Grafton's a different animal, though.
Yes.
A lot of people are going to have vested interest in making sure their comments are heard, they're going to feel like, you know, this will matter more, it's just, it's a different population.
We hope for a higher number.
Alex, are you going to do some kind of education of why I ought to respond to it? I mean, and here's what I say, I looked at your questionnaire, and I'm looking at, well, do I really want to tell everybody that I've heated with, solely with firewood for over 40 years, and the next thing, have somebody knocking at my door, "You're polluting the environment," you know, so, and I'm not saying that, I'm just using that as an example, but people are skeptical.
There is a...
What's going to happen to it after, after I fill it out? What do they, what's it going to get used for? So, I think some education upfront might get people to buy into, like, this is important, and this is why I should do it.
Well, I guess that brings us back to the one decision I think we need to make tonight. And, I mean, I got my preferences, I said them earlier, they haven't changed. Do you want to implement this summer, or do you want to wait until after this grant application period, and then have the probability of having, I think it'd be about $4,000 to help us out? If you want to do it during the summer, then that creates a timeline in my mind that we need to implement immediately.
Yeah.
Getting this finalized, heck, we haven't even decided who we want to ask. We had a discussion about landowners that don't live here, we talked about business owners that live in Rockingham, we don't even know who live there. So, decisions have to be made, I just need to know which date you want to do it at, fall, or, or honestly, you know...
We don't want to exclude anyone either, do we?
No.
Well, again, that's a decision I didn't plan on making tonight. I'd rather wait, because we've got this land use thing that's going to take at least some time. I can come next week, or next month, with a timeline, and maybe we have to have a special meeting or two to get some things together. I'm thinking things, you brought it up, in next month, I'd like to have an article in the Grafton News saying, "Hey, come this summer, we're doing a survey, let's tell you why."
For the fall, yes.
And then the next month, have another one, and say, "Don't forget it's coming, you know, we'll give you a lollipop," or whatever it takes. You know, you laugh, but we got a survey from a professional organization recently, it says, "If you submit this, we put your name in a raffle," you know, and I was like, "You know what, I'm going to take an extra minute and do that, what the heck?" So, give me a lollipop, I'll take one.
It's possible a bolt fund would buy into giving us a small grant for this, I'm just noodling on this, so we should...
I know nothing about...
We should brainstorm at some point, but I don't know about you guys, but I vote for the fall, I don't think the summer's realistic, given what else is going on.
I would agree.
Matt, you can quiet over there, where are you at?
Well, we shouldn't let it go, I mean, and don't let it drag on too much longer, we've been talking about it for over a year.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not saying that we don't work on it.
Yes.
The execution phase.
And... But there's no reason we shouldn't be very, very prepared to hit the ground running in the fall with this amount of time.
Yeah, September, you thinking?
Yeah, the application comes out, I think, mid-August, and ends in October, and so we'd have to get it within that time, it doesn't mean we can't put in the application together, so the date it comes official, we can just fill in the blanks and send it and get on the front end. So, all right, don't know if I need to vote on that, I think we have consensus, and I'm going to create a timeline, both on paper and on mine, and figure out what that'll look like. Did not have any other plans on that, and we're a little bit off base, I apologize for that. The other thing that I talked to him about is the village center designation, and everything's moving forward with that, it's on the agenda later, but there's not a lot to talk about, the package is generally ready to go. I have to approach the board to, we have a letter of, "You're supporting a village center," but it's a couple of years old, so I'd like to hit you guys up with another letter, just to put it in the packet. I emailed our photographer late last week, did not get a response back, but he's got everything he needs.
Do we ever see a final version of that?
He's got everything, and I've got the giant map with the marker on it that he's got a copy of.
Yeah, but he hasn't sent us back.
He has not finished his map yet, he put it on the back burner, because we didn't have a town plan, and we had other things to do. Now that we have a town plan, I have not talked to him, but John Bennett said it's on his radar, and he's working on it, so... My question to John was, what am I missing? And we went through the entire checklist, I told him what we had, and he sounded, he said, "You guys, we'll interact together," so it's more of a validation thing. So, that was the very long update Wyndham Regional, which was kind of regional. DRB?
We closed the, I have an official hearing earlier this month, on those minor subdivision that was approved by the DRB. There is another request for minor subdivision on the 27th, that the board will be hearing for property out on 121 East.
Where, sorry?
121 East, Charlie Carter, Hayden Lake, the young, or the requested...
No. Hands around, there we go. Half of them, there we go. All right, no big controversy, or you haven't even looked at it yet, or just, that's more curiosity question?
Yeah, I mean, we, we don't pre-study it, we show up and give hearing, that's how the DRB works. But the request is available, the application is available at the town offices.
Yeah. Anything else, or is that...
That's it.
Village wastewater, any updates on that?
No.
No, we're just continuing on researching other ideas, and the concepts that we...
Anything from your work going to be a town plan, and I didn't see anything, obviously, in the articles or anything like that, so there's nothing...
Town meeting.
Town meeting, I'm sorry, town meeting, yeah.
Not particularly, no.
Not specific to that?
This year.
Okay.
But we, we'd like as many as possible to come to our meetings and help share ideas, and, again, that's where the survey is going to come in, you know? You know, the intention of the survey was to, we had a survey in mind from the get-go with this water wastewater study.
Well, I don't want to over-survey our community, but we do have that, god, it's a 15-page survey just on water wastewater. Is it worth your crew getting together and saying, "You know, maybe we should do a survey earlier than this big global one," and then we'd pull those out, and it would shorten ours a little bit? I don't know if that's a good or a terrible idea, kind of mixed, but something you guys have to think about, not us, maybe.
That might be an idea.
Where does it stand now? Do we have water questions in the current draft of this survey that you're working on?
Very reduced from the original.
Limited.
This is a very ugly draft, and you're welcome to look at it. I found a, a survey, and I've got them all saved, like I said, it had seven or eight pages of water wastewater questions, specifically designed for that, and since we were looking at a more global survey, we tried to pare it down, because, you know, originally we had like a 40-page survey that nobody would be willing to take, and trying to make those decisions.
And David, where did you say this other survey is available?
On my hard drive.
Would you, is it a PDF or something you could...
I imagine it is, or it's either that or a Word file, so yes.
Could you just send it to me via email?
I could.
I think I have a copy of that, I think.
Do you?
I think so.
If not, he's got a copy in...
Yeah, we'll find it, I'll find it, it's in there. I'll add it to my list.
Planning Commission survey is what you're looking for?
No, this was, our planning commission survey is a conglomeration of many that I had found online. I found one that was a very in-depth water wastewater survey only, and we looked at that as a whole, and then pulled out the questions we thought were most important. I mean, they had, they had in-depth questions about your septic system, and about...
I set that aside, knowing that we'd probably use it, or we, yeah, so we, yeah, we'll work on that.
Well, we collaborate, because if you do that, that'll shorten ours, and we don't want to be redundant, and that would be...
And we could revisit it, Suzanne, you know, the survey, and maybe do it as a preliminary shot out to the town, see how kind of response we get. We got good response from just the testing.
You're going to meet between now and our next meeting? Is wastewater going to meet between next planning? All right, so hopefully you...
No, our next meeting is on March 12th, and yours is on March 11th.
Yeah.
So, but I, I, I see here that these questions that are about water in this area may not be as applicable now that we've had our drinking water test in the village.
It's a diversity point.
Yeah, because, how do you filter your drinking water, which we ask people, and have you ever had your water source tested? We might be able to, we need to just...
Oh, that could eliminate some, because, yeah.
We just need to talk about this as the commission.
Yep, he's got both this copy, and he also says he has the one purely on water and wastewater.
Let's just do it that way. Now, say again, David, your timeline for adding the, or you're going to put the timeline together, you don't have a date yet.
Well, in my mind, I'm thinking about a timeline that we have to do before the window for applying for a municipal planning grant becomes available.
Okay.
That's the timeline I'm talking about. Municipal planning grants become available, I think, mid-August, and you have to apply before the end of October. So, if we are successful, and I don't have the numbers in front of me, it's a 10% match, we put in our budget for next year, $400, with the idea that we would have a total of 4,000.
Nice.
And then, part of my timeline in my head between now and when we apply, is to have that timeline of when we are going to implement. Some of my, I'm not a statistician, I'm not a survey expert, some of our research that we've discussed is, you've got to create a real tight window for doing these surveys, you can't just send them out and hope three months later people are still doing them. So, there's that timeline that has to be established, I have not thought about it all.
So, you have established a date by which you'd like this questionnaire finished?
My, my original plan was this summer.
Yeah.
But I was not aware until this meeting that I talked about earlier, that we're not allowed to apply for municipal planning grants. I thought it was 12 months rolling, and it's only this little window that you can apply, and I wasn't aware of that. We weren't eligible a year ago, or eight months ago, six months ago, because we did not have an approved, excuse me, adopted town plan.
Okay.
Which technically, without getting into the mud of the town plan, right now we would not be able to apply either, because the Wyndham Regional has to approve the town plan before you're allowed to apply for municipal planning grants. That process is going forward, and I would expect it will be done by early April, and I don't foresee any major problems, I say slowly.
Okay, so what I'm thinking is in action, and then we need water questions, and we need them either or both, for this survey, and/or a separate survey.
Well, that'd be, I think that you frame that extremely well, because the other option is that you guys get together and say, "Here are the questions we want you to put in your survey," rather than us making that choice.
Right, right. And/or, and/or we'll do a separate survey, and Matt's going to provide the separate survey.
And Matt could hold them if he can't find them.
And we'll, and we'll add it to the commission, and then we'll use this, and the questions that are already on here. I love the way you have this, and I think the participants will go, you know, because even though this is multiple pages, when you have questions like this with these multiple choices, these grading choices, you can go through those pretty quickly.
That was our thought process, absolutely. It's still a work in progress, you know? All right, anything else with Village Wastewater?
And we do hope to be doing some educational outreach to the community, as far as what they should and should not be doing regarding their wells and wastewater systems.
All right, keep us informed, I guess we'll talk about it next time in terms of the survey. Anything to report from the select board, from you or Allison, you're here?
Pre-town meeting will be coming up on the 24th. Pre-town meeting will be coming up on the 24th.
Is it a Monday?
It's a Monday.
Okay.
Regular select board meeting next Monday, the 17th, and following Monday will be pre-town meeting.
Okay. Hope to see everybody there. Hope it goes long enough that we get some lunch, sometimes we don't, like peas.
Yeah.
Sorry.
School peas won't be there, as it has been in the past.
Oh, that'll be different, that's right. It's not two votes, it's one vote now, not to be too defensive.
But, you know, the warrants, does, I mean, it's pretty straightforward, I'm not sure there's anything controversial.
Yeah, I read those the other night, so. All right. Anything else for
A lot of the usual suspects.
Correspondence. I have one, just acknowledging the notes, and I assume, I was not aware of this. We all got emailed from Bill, the energy planning standards for municipal planning grants. I had not seen that before, and again, it's one of those, I don't know what I don't know, and it looks like he was given this as an assignment, I don't know if it went through you guys or what, to analyze our energy element and how it meets the plan, and this was a lot of work. I, I assume Bill did it all, I don't know if you guys reviewed this in your, but he really did an in-depth analysis. The main thing is, everything got answered yes, it's a bunch of questions, does it do these things? It got answered yes, but he, again, the, the level of detail of each page, each paragraph, each quote to verify that it does it, again, we've all worked on that town plan, and I guess I'd like to have it noted that I was impressed with that. I don't know if you've seen that?
Yeah, Marion Major did something similar for us, it's been a while though, so I don't wanna be held to this, but I remember seeing that document, and that was, that definitely helped us, this is a couple of years ago now, guide what we did to make that enhanced plan, so I, I do recognize that document.
Okay, that's like I said.
It was a lot, yes.
You know, I get frustrated with the minutia of the bureaucracy of this world, and that's a little bit. As deep as it gets when you start looking at that stuff there, in my opinion. I do have to, and I have not done it yet, my goal is to bring it to you for approval, and I'll send it out via email, can I do that legally? Marion contacted me and said she wants a paragraph, and I don't have my email up, on validating that our energy element corresponds and ties in and is harmonious with the other chapters kind of paragraph. I was gonna bring something, and I have not gotten to it, I'll try and send that out because she needs that for her to finish her work. I asked her, "What do you mean?", and she gave me some feedback, but she said a paragraph, but, I'll give you update and send it to you once I figure out what I'm gonna say on that. You're giving me a real funny look on that.
The chair is duly authorized to do something like that, yes.
'Cause you're retiring anyways.
No, you're just stating the obvious, which is the town plan is integrated.
I gotta read her emails a couple of times to figure out exactly what she, we'll get her done. If there is nothing else, we're gonna move on to town plan. My goal as a reminder, I don't have energy element, oh, energy element was there just to let you know about the work that Bill did, and that I gotta write that paragraph, so that, that one is done. I do, and I hope we will, it's, you know, we have time, talk about roads and transportation. Not because that's a pressing issue, but just the opposite, it's not pressing, it's non-controversial, and I'd like to kinda run it through a litmus test of activities to see if it meets our needs and desires without having the controversy of land use and energy and all the other things, so. But before we do that, let's talk about land use. Go. I am gonna start, if I could, by saying, last summer, Al brought up, for the first time that I'd ever heard of it, this issue with the critical land use, and it shocked me, 'cause I had not intended that chapter to look the way he envisioned it.
Or interpreted.
Interpreted it, thank you.
Critical resource areas.
Exactly.
Yes.
And the interpretation of things like, you can't do anything.
Right.
I will do two things and then open it up, just so we have...
Can I just have a copy? Because I love
Yes.
And I'll give it back at the end.
We have two extra copies, who did not get theirs?
Yeah, I've got one, but I don't have it.
Okay, so these two might...
But I can find out if I can.
Send them one.
I don't know, I'm not sure. We, I'd like to do two things, put us kind of in the same page, if I could. This, and I don't know if you guys have seen, this is my cheat sheet that I use often when I'm doing town plans, what is a summary of two websites. One website is the Wyndham Regional Plan, their planning manual, they have a long, long step-by-step planning manual, you have a printed copy at your desk, I'm sure.
Yes.
All right, and the other one is the town, the required elements of a town plan that Wyndham Regional uses in their approval process, this is their rubric, if you will. So, these are quotes, "Municipal town plans in Vermont are necessary to," and it lists three big areas, "empower local decision-making, qualify and receive priority of certain state and federal programs, and influence state regulator proceedings," and there are two, "Act 250 applications must conform to the municipal plans, applications for Section 248 Certificate of Public Good," which is, to be clear, windmills and cell towers, that's Act 248, A and B, I think they're called. This does not, this land use right now doesn't concern this one, "must be given due consideration to the municipal plan." And then, I think I put it in here, oop, there it is on the back page, "Act 250 review has 10 criteria for review." Anytime something goes to an Act 250 process, there are 10 criteria, I only printed number 10. Criteria number 10, is it in conformance with local or regional plans or capital facilities program? So that's kind of how the Act 250 piece ties together. Next, I said there's two, this is the second one. This is statute, these are definitions from statute, and we are gonna define the word "development," 'cause that's the word that runs everything here, because we're talking about no development. They have about 14 definitions, the one that I think pertains to us is number five, "The construction of improvements on a tract of land involving more than 10 acres that is to be used for municipal, county, or state purposes." Is that the town park, ground?
Village park.
The village park.
Okay.
The others are every, all, I mean, these are all over the map, this is the only one that talks about municipalities.
Okay.
Again, I can share this after I'm done reading it, maybe I missed one. "The construction of improvements on a tract of land involving more than 10 acres that is to be used for municipal, county, or state purposes." That clearly defines the ones we are concerned about, not all of them. Turner...
They're, they're all over 10 acres.
But, but of the red dots, and I, I got the map here, I guess I can...
They're over 10 acres in state land, and they're over 10 acres in municipality.
Okay.
So David, does the...
And there's more to this, I have to read the rest, but I wanna get that piece locked in.
Does the 10 acres refer to the, the property used in the development?
The tract of land you own.
The tract of land.
Yes, if you have 11 acres and you're gonna put a little tiny thing on it, you have 11 acres.
Okay, so it's not if you have 100 acres, and your improvement's gonna take up 10 acres?
No, no.
It's if your total tract of land is more than 10 acres.
I believe that it's correct, and, and I don't know a lot about law, but I know enough to always answer, "I believe that's correct," 'cause I'm no lawyer in this.
So what we're saying is that development applies to municipal land, tract of land over...
According to John Bennett, and John Bennett is the assistant director at the Wyndham Regional, he's also their head planner, okay, I wasn't sure. He said, "Dave, you did not define development in your town plan, therefore you go to statutes," and, and that's what this came from. And so this is, by statute, the definition of our development in our town plan. Are we in consensus on that, and clear? All right, other questions? The second part says, "In computing the amount of land involved," oh, this answers your question, maybe, "In computing the amount of land involved, land shall be included that is incidental to the use, such as lawns, parking areas, roadways," now I'm thinking, "leach fields and accessory buildings."
So now I'm thinking that it is the definition, that if you have 100 acres, 10 acres...
I'm gonna read the sentence again.
Yeah, I think it's confusing.
Welcome to Law Class 101, folks. "In computing the amount of land involved, land shall be included that is incidental to the use, such as lawns, parking areas, roadways, leaching fields, and accessory buildings."
So what does incidental to the use mean? I'm gonna look that up.
Al, have you done any looking into this?
Well, I think, I think there's, there's kinda like two cuts there. The first cut is the total acreage, and that says, yes, Act 250 has jurisdiction.
Agreed.
And then the second part is when they start talking about the affected area of the project, and so then they talk about parking lots, you know, lawns, et cetera, et cetera.
When I'm reviewing these applications, you have to just draw a big square around that whole project.
So, so it's allowing them...
About the whole project or the whole property?
Like, I, I would draw the line that starts at the driveway, I include the septic area, I include the...
The development area.
Like, if it was 100 acres, you wouldn't draw it around 100 acres.
No, but it gets big fast, you end up having like a two or three acre...
Sure, but if you just wanted to cut down some trees, it would not be a problem.
Well, I, I think it's confusing, isn't it? I mean, I don't think we really know.
I am not an English major, but I'm gonna try and ask a smarty pants English question, and I'm not an English major.
I was once.
Okay, now you get stuck with this one. I am gonna read a sentence that has, I don't wanna say two subjects, it's been a long time, "Construction and improvements, tract of land," that's two things.
Yes.
"The following words are involving more than 10 acres." So my question is, what is the involving more than 10 acres referring to?
Right.
The tract of land or the construction improvements?
Exactly, that is a very well...
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah, that's what we're all asking.
It's not, I, what's your answer?
You would block just a little area, it would be part of a management plan.
No, I'm saying, those people are saying, "Oh, the people can't cut down a tree if it's falling across the path," and I'm like, "That's ridiculous, of course that was not our intention." And if somebody's interpreting it that way, we need to fix it, and it's just a matter of, "Oh, it could be interpreted two ways," we need to clarify our intent.
Makes sense.
Because nobody was saying that you can't cut down a tree if it's falling down across the path.
Agreed.
I would, I would not assume in any way, shape, or form yet, that we have that kind of attitude about it. I mean, we're really truly seeking clarification. I am truly seeking clarification.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm not trying to be, have an attitude or...
Oh, I don't think you were.
Okay.
People complained, said, said to me, Valerie, was this the intention of a planning commission? And I was like, "No, it was not, just to be clear, this is not the intention, so show me the language that you're concerned about, and we will try to address it."
Okay.
And I'm gonna read it, that was not our intention.
Right, yeah.
But also, I think to ask the question is not in and of itself combative.
No.
Okay.
No, at all.
Good, good, just wanted to make sure we were clear on that.
Yes.
Al?
I think, in my mind, there's two issues, and, and to go and maintain the trails, to cut the hazard trees, to approve the trail, that's maintenance, and, and I, and I agree, that's not the issue for me, that I think that can go forward, that's just routine maintenance and safety. The issue is when we wanted to do a couple one-acre patch cuts for wildlife habitat, birding areas, and the area where the, that wood that comes off those patch cuts would come to a landing near Fire Pond Road, that, that also for us gets that landing area roughed in as an expense to the logger that's doing the...
And that develops it.
And, and that part, I think we can still get by calling that logging, and there is a right to log, assuming the community's good with that. The next step is where I think we now cross the line, and that's when we take that log landing and gravel and drainage and update that, so it becomes a parking lot for the, for the park.
Or a trailhead, is a better word?
A parking lot, trailhead, kiosk, kiosk, and, and we put up a lead-to in there that the kids from the school use and the people at the museum use for their activities. Now we've crossed the line to development.
Well, I'm gonna say this now, to shorten some of our discussion.
Can I finish?
Well, okay, but I think you're gonna see we all agree, but...
So, so now we've crossed the line to development when we've done those things, and now we have to get an Act 250 permit, yes?
It's questionable, no.
Yes, yes, we have to get an Act 250.
Yeah, it's not 10 acres, that's what I'm trying to clarify, I think it's only if it's more than 10 acres, and that's what Chuck's telling us, right, this is a plan.
A clarification is, the town plan does not trigger Act 250. The town plan allows us to, to be a partner in that discussion, but the town plan and what it says has power, and ours says, "No development."
That's correct.
You said it last summer, when you first brought it up to me, and I'm gonna repeat the example you use, and so I have a position now that I'm open to change if somebody wants to, is, what if someday you want to create a replica of the Turner place down there? The, the, the guest house is there, but not the original Turner place? I think that would be such a wonderful addition to our community, to have that rebuilt. It's questionable right now, there's no question, a building like that is development, and when you read ours red, that becomes an issue, so my position now is, we gotta fix this. I don't know what the other town, what the other planning commission members are.
Well, I still want a ruling from somebody at the state and/or a planning expert, that is this only if the piece is more than 10 acres that's being developed? That's what it sounds like is subject to interpretation, and that certainly wasn't our intention, that nobody should ever be able to do anything small and upgrade or, you know, make something more user-friendly. So, nobody was trying to stifle that kind of thing.
I agree with Valerie, I think that needs to be clarified.
Yes.
Because if, if the answer could go either way, because we're adopting the development of, of the definition of development according to the statute we read, which had a 10-acre boundary of some sort. If it's interpreted one way, that the development is equal to or less than 10 acres, then it would not trigger Act 250 application, would it?
So, that's, we don't know.
Because it's not fitting the definition of development.
So we need a ruling in writing from somebody in the state, the question is, who interprets this stuff on the state level? Is it the secretary?
So I'll reference that exact paragraph, and I'll start by the Wyndham Regional, and they'll direct me to somebody.
Yes, I bet it's the secretary of state, if I had a guess.
I think that would be really, really helpful.
We can go to the Act 250 office.
Right.
Thank you, that's what I was thinking, John, the other thing is...
The Wyndham Madison.
Yeah, you'd have to sit down and look at the language, I, I didn't, you know, we didn't say just outright, "No development."
Yeah, you did.
It's pretty strong.
I thought there was some language that...
We softened it a little.
Okay, I thought there was softening.
Softened language has the word desire in it, but the words "no development" are there.
And specifically what?
"Critical resource areas are key sites that are particularly sensitive and should be given maximum consideration for protection."
Yes.
"Although there are no specific zoning regulations or ordinances prohibiting development on private land, it is the expressed desire of the town that no development occurs in critical resource areas."
Capital N, capital O.
Yes, in critical resource areas, not every place.
So...
But that's pink on the map.
Is improvement, such as Al's suggesting, improvement, wildlife improvement, is that considered a development?
I would lean towards no. These line was, when you go from a landing to a trail.
Now, even that, you're improving the land, you're not developing, you're not putting up
Right.
Anything detrimental.
Well, we can lawyer between ourselves, ultimately, it's what they say, so.
So that's how you present it, to this point, where you go softly with them, say, "We wanna improve this land."
Right.
"We're not putting up a parking lot, a pave..."
But you talk a lead-to a pavilion, once you go 3D, how do you say that's land improvement and not development?
Right. Habitat, habitat manipulation is forestry work, and that's permitted. So I'm, I'm good with that part. It's doing the next phases where we jump ahead and we do the parking lot, the access, the kiosk, the lean-to. That's development, and, and now we've crossed the line.
So, so here's a question, Al.
And they're gonna look at the town plan.
I, I agree, yes. And, and it's really, again, we're in a commission meeting, but we're, we're family, and we're all having this discussion. Right now, I see two options for the planning commission. Um, my original plan, and I've said it multiple times, is get a plan approved that's acceptable, and then work on making it better. Today, we start with the transportation chapter for the reasons we gave. With the idea that when we're ready to do energy, land, and the controversial ones, we have a system in place that is a non-emotional rubric for making sure that this is more readable, that it flows parallel each chapter, et cetera, et cetera. My question to you, and again, you're not here to represent the select board, but you are a select board person, as you are temporarily. The things that you're talking about doing is that stuff that, boy, we better quickly do just the math, like, at the next meeting and, and approve it? Because you're talking about three months after we approve an edited town plan? And, well, Chuck, give me some math. If we were to approve a town plan edited tonight, we'd have to go through like a forty-five day warning period? Then they'd get it for another forty-five days? And then it's gotta go to the vote? And we're talking close to a thousand dollars, is what Bill said?
Fourteen hundred.
Fourteen hundred.
Fourteen hundred.
What it cost for the last one.
So is changing this map so urgent that we should spend that fourteen hundred and do this to get a change probably by August or September? Or should we have this as more of a part of the bigger discussion that would be more like a year and a half?
Or it's part of town meeting next year.
I don't know if we'd be there by then, just, we have the discussion.
Not the whole thing. I just mean, this, if, if this is what's bothering people and we need to reprise it.
I don't wanna wait that long, personally, but...
Because that's not mending the map.
No, either way, we need a ruling from...
Yes, that, that's, for me, that answer will have some impact on whether we need to do this quickly. But the other thing that would have an impact is I understand this map is holding up progress for the select board to do some things. Is that accurate?
I, I'm not willing to go forward until we get clarification.
Okay.
Whether the clarification comes from Act 250, um, whether the clarification, um, comes some legal opinion, or if you just change the classification instead of calling that critical area.
But that's my point. It's gonna take the process.
Well, I know, I understand that.
So do you think we should do that immediately? And because then a year from now, we're gonna do it again? Because a year from now, we're gonna do the whole plan? Is, is, is that what you think we should do? Is get this done now?
I'm really impatient to hear about the whole plan. We're getting it.
I realize that.
May I just add a little bit to that discussion? First of all, I think that as an observer of the select board discussion on January twentieth, the, and correct me out and criticize if I misunderstood this. The select board has asked Al to be the person in charge of the village park. And it is he personally who brought this issue up to the select board. The select board, the, the limitation, and he's, and he's invested or authorized to do that by the select board as the person in charge of the village park. And he personally is not comfortable moving forward. And I think that's a very reasonable position, given the confusion right now. And, um, yeah, I don't recall that there was a vote or anything else by the select board not to move forward. It was more a consideration of Al's position and judgment that this should be put on hold. So, do you, is that pretty much summarizing the discussion you remember?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. But I, I would like to put forth to the planning commission, and the reason I'm here tonight, I think the issue of the village park needs to be resolved, and I think it needs to be resolved quickly, to be honest. But I do think it is emblematic of a larger problem in this community about the land use section of the town plan. What we learned, what I learned in the information meeting about the town plan, and what I observed is that there's, there are people in our community who feel they have not had a voice in the development of the land use map. And if we claim that the town plan is a shared vision of our community, I think there are people who've been, who feel left out of being part of that shared vision. And Dave, I just wanted to clarify, in that information meeting, did you say in a very self-effacing way that you personally colored the land use map?
Well, we call it crayon map.
The crayon map. You personally colored it.
Yeah, we got copies in PDFs of it.
Okay. And then could you describe what approval process it went through? The planning commission? Did the planning commission vote on it? And say, this is what we want?
December eleventh, two thousand eighteen.
Okay, so that, so you first developed it, but then the planning commission approved.
And then I went to Jeff Nugent, who is the cartographer. It went to regional commission, and he made the pretty one that we now have in the plan.
And I believe you said you used Act 171 as your guide?
One of the many things that was part of the content that we looked at. Yes, absolutely.
And to what extent? And I'm sorry, I just don't remember. To what extent was there a hearing or a, a meeting or any way to involve the community in the discussion of those designated areas?
Probably the, well, the, the multiple steps. Obviously, our meetings are always public.
Yeah.
You know, I think about that. I am not a writer, I don't like writing.
Okay.
If I was to recognize one of the many weaknesses I wish I could get better at, I'd love to put an article a month in the Grafton News about what we're doing. I, I don't...
Minutes are...
But the minutes are out and are out there.
Minutes are out.
We sat here for two years.
Yes.
And we had one person who came to our planning commission meetings.
Okay. I'm just asking the question.
No, that's, that's fine. No, I'm not defensive, I understand that.
I'm really, really, really asking that question.
Then we had the big town hearing. I don't know if you attended that one. We had about sixty or seventy. That was January of twenty nineteen. Um, I had a forty-four page PowerPoint I went through, and I had all, did all of this, and then we had questions. We, from there, then we approved it, then it went to them.
Plenty of opportunities for people to participate, and for whatever reason, it didn't happen until it came to the heads of the week.
Yeah, I'd like to think we did it as public as we could, but we could always get better in the minutes.
So, I, what I would like to just suggest is that the planning commission consider prioritizing land use as one of its top priorities in, in considering where we go from here with the town plan. Said differently, let's not start with the non-controversial issues and put, and, and get those resolved and with this hanging out there in our community about the need to resolve this larger land use. I am much more interested in having people feel that they are included and that whatever decisions we make about land use have, have at least been vetted with our whole community. And I, I respect the fact that you feel as though you've given people the opportunity to do that, and may, and maybe they just didn't do it. But I, I would strongly suggest that you prioritize this issue. Let's make the village park part of it, and let's get it resolved for, for us in gratitude.
I think first we just need to hear what the ruling from the state is, because I'm not sure that there are other additional pressing, time-sensitive issues that don't let us work through the process and...
So Valerie, what I'm trying to suggest is just the opposite. But I do think that the larger land use issue is a pressing priority for our community. I know it's rubbing a whole group of people the wrong way.
Well, I think a lot of people have the wrong information.
Yes, that's exactly...
All right, and we need the right information from a hearing with WRC, the state, the bio finder, uh, explaining Act 171. What's his name, Jens? Where can we get these people to come talk to us? Can we get them for a town meeting?
Well, and, and again, that's one of the agenda items for tonight. Al, but you had your hands up first. I'll explain what my thoughts on it.
I'd just like to reinforce what Suzanne said. I'd really like to see you fix the map as far as state land. And I've said it before, and people are sick of hearing me say it, but we're a Dillon state, and you only have jurisdiction in a Dillon state on the things that the state law allows the town to have. And when you put a map together like you have, and you've included state land as critical areas, no development, you wind up setting up the same problem that exists in Lundan Derry at Lowell Lake, where, where the state is trying to improve the state park at Lowell Lake and the locals that don't want their backyard to be shared with the rest. It is state land, it isn't their land, it isn't a town park, it's a state park. And they're trying to use the town land to stop it.
You're preaching to the choir, and it wouldn't...
Well, and, that's what I'm saying.
Well, we get that, we need to move on and fix it now.
If you're gonna fix it, let's, let's...
Talk about what the problem is more, no?
No, let's include that in the fix.
So what I hear you both saying is, and again, two community members, one being a select board member on this project, is your desire would be to get and spend the fourteen hundred dollars as fast as possible to fix this one thing, and then deal with the rest of it down the road?
Yes.
Al?
I, I'd like to see it fixed soon.
Okay, all right. I, I want that clarification. I've asked it, and I wasn't sure in answer until this moment, that that would be your preference. Okay, while we're fixing?
Now, I've heard Matt refer to, when there was a discussion between Matt and Joe, the reason for the green on the map was corridors. Wildlife corridors, 171.
Large and block habitats, actually.
Correct. But the description in, in the green says it is unique habitat. Unique habitat species, et cetera, et cetera. It's, the description doesn't say it's a corridor.
And I'm gonna take time out because we're not gonna resolve this tonight. That would not be fair to the rest of the community. So if you wanna talk about what you want, let's hold off because it's, we got a clock going on. I know what you're saying, I think.
The description should match the cause or the reason behind it.
Right.
There are things that can happen to improve corridors or, or mitigate corridor issues. But when you've classified it as unique habitat, that sets up a whole different scenario.
I think the important ecological function covers that, though.
Yes, me too.
So my question, so we can move forward, is do we as a planning commission want to put this out there and say we're gonna move forward and have another process, or not? And I guess I, I open it up to you guys. Let me explain to you two what I was envisioning. And I don't know if these two visions can meld or not.
Probably not, but what the heck?
The reason I chose transportation is because I want, one of the first complaints was it doesn't read well. And, and choosing transportation would create a template. And I have a template in mind in terms of fixing things that are not, not a real problem. Our March meeting, um, if you are not aware, that's when, I mean, just before that, the Wyndham Regional's having their hearings here on that date. My plan was at our April meeting to have a more publicized meeting that would include, and you guys weren't here at the other meeting, we have a list of people this, how do you say his name? Yans, Jens? A variety of other people, including, if possible, I talked to Bill about even getting our lawyer here that night. So that, and then do a good marketing campaign for that night. You know, we got two people tonight. If I do that level of marketing to talk about land, we're gonna be in the same boat that you're talking about now. You know, only those that show up speak. We're missing five hundred and forty-eight people right now. You know? And that's why I wanted to wait till April, to make sure we got enough advertising out and use that date. I also wanna make sure these other people that I'd like to invite as guests would come. So that was my plan to really... Matt said it, and my frustration and I apologize has boiled over multiple times for the disinformation that's been put out in this community about this town plan. I don't know how much of it was purposeful and how much of it was ignorance, but there's been a lot of disinformation out there. And we've tried to explain it. It's incredibly complex. I will repeat to the camera, the town plan is not zoning. It is not property assessment maps. All right? And, and it's been frustrating, and it's a very complex thing. So my plan would be to get anybody that wants to come and listen to the experts all at once. And if we color it all white, I'm okay with that, especially if the community agrees on it. But let's do it based on factual information, not misinformation. That's my big concern at this point. So, committee, there's four of us here. What do you wanna do in terms of land use map? You wanna bundle it with everything else that we're here? You wanna put this top priority, starting with a discussion I would assume in March? I haven't thought about the market's agenda yet? Something else?
May, Val and Matt have repeated this a couple of times. You and I could send an email to John Fay tomorrow asking for his interpretation based on the Act 250 for what he thinks would happen with the review of the town plan and if it's a prohibition on all development. So that would be a good, important first step.
But I think you've got a point you mentioned earlier. And I, one of the things that did not work, and, and these folks know we've worked so hard on this, was we wanted consensus on the town plan, because one of our goals is to use this town plan to bring the town together because of the divisiveness. It's been a frustrating year because that's not worked at all. In fact, it's more split than it's ever been. If we got an answer from this guy at Act 250 that says, hey, everything you're talking about's fine. No, no problem whatsoever, would you still wanna put this as a high priority and get it done quickly because of the divisiveness in the town? Or could it wait because you can go ahead and get done what you wanna get done?
I think the sooner you resolve it, the better.
Very good.
But I, but I also think there's two different scenarios. You can go talk to somebody in Act 250 and, and get an answer tomorrow. Might get a little different response when my lawyer is representing me in an Act 250 hearing and pushing and saying, I read the town plan. The town plan says this. And that's not what you really want to happen. But by golly, my lawyer's good, and that's what happened.
So the question we asked was a blind point.
Oh, I understand. Oh, I understand. I understand.
But your answer to my question is, no matter what this answer comes back, you still wanna get this going fast.
I'd like to see a result.
I have a question for you, Al.
Yeah?
Alright, this is on camera. How are you going to proceed with this project? Regardless of the, take away the town plan.
How were we going to?
How are you gonna proceed? Who are you gonna get permission from to do it? Take away the town plan and the pre-land commission. How are you going to implement this project? Who are you going to get permission from?
I've already talked to the select board. I've run the concept by the select board of what I wanted to do, propose to do. That was a, and that came about from a meeting, the two meetings, which representatives from the school, the elementary school, the ponds, recreation center for Wyndham Foundation, the museum.
Nature museum.
Seems like there was a couple. But anyways, we had user groups, user groups that we met.
What was the next step? Just go and do it? What was your next step? Just go in and do it?
The forester, Hayden Lake, who's already made recommendations, written recommendations to the select board, which we have. He and I were going to go out and lay out where the patch cuts were, lay out where the landing future parking lot was going to be, and probably designate where the lead to it.
You had it mapped out? You had it mapped out?
Well, well, once we laid it out on the ground, we GPS it, put it on a map, and so people could see it. And then have a public meeting and say, this is what we're prepared to do. And, and see.
So at that point, who would give the permission? So yeah, let's do it.
Select board.
Select board. Why not Act 250?
Well, huh? Well, we didn't think about Act 250 until the town plan and then discussion. And then it was like, oh, maybe we have to go through Act 250.
But without the town plan, you would have had to go through Act 250. Yes. Act 250 is not required by a town plan. There's no difference.
I get it. And so the town plan discussion actually.
Made us more legal.
Made, made us think about, oh, we need to do that. And we probably, alright, probably wouldn't have.
Well, Bill Kearns stated not, because I'm on camera, I wanna make this clear. It's his opinion that there's probably a lot of development in Grafton in every town in Vermont that goes without Act 250 because the bar is much lower, that you've gotta step over. You know, any ten acre development, which is a lot of people in Grafton according to him, should have, but don't often apply for that.
Correct.
If sixty-five percent of our land is already under continuous use, that land is exempt from Act 250. That means there's only about thirty-five percent of land that's, right?
Don't, don't mix things. Sixty-five percent of the land for logging and forest management, wildlife management, that, there's an agreement there with the state. But if you wanna build on that land, then that's something different. And in fact, if you take a forested area and you clearcut it so that you have a two acre building lot, that land has to come out of the tax break.
Okay.
It has to be withdrawn.
And to be clear, when we say continuous use, the term we use is current use.
I'm sorry.
No, no problem, I just wanna make sure we're not talking about something different.
I misspoke. But that, that, here, here's, here's a possible explanation where I think some of the disinformation came from, because I've had to really struggle with this myself. The town plan is not a legally binding document as an ordinance would be or a bylaw would be. And that's, that, that makes sense. And so when you say there's disinformation out there that people think this plan is a zoning law or a, never been passed by a legislative body, it's not an ordinance, it's not. Here's where I think people have a hard time rapping their head around restrictions that the town plan presumably provides. And that is, if you have to apply for an Act 250 permit, and if in that application process, one of the criteria, and you read it to us, number ten, is a consistency, I'm not using the right word there, Dave. There's a word in, in the, in the tenth one, that it has to be consistent with. Conform, thank you. Conform to the town plan.
And I'd like to clarify without interrupting.
No.
Or if there is no town plan, it's gotta conform with the regional plan. And I'd like to add, our resource land is the same as the regional plan, so that would have no impact except for we have critical resource, and that's the vote.
Okay.
It would still be resource land.
That's a great clarification. But I think what happens then, when people are told and understand, and I think rightly so, that their use of the land would ultimately be defined by an Act 250 hearing. And during that hearing, the town plan would be taken into consideration. It may have, if the courts rule accordingly, the same effect as a zoning ordinance. Does that make sense, what I'm just saying? It has, it's not a zoning ordinance, but it could have the same effect as a zoning ordinance. And I think that, that could, that can be construed as different disinformation, but for me, it's, it's hard to kinda wrap my head around that.
These same discussions.
It's nuanced.
When Act 250 was evolved, remember, Al?
Oh, yeah.
It's the same questions are going, going around now that happened back in the seventies. When Act 250 came about, everybody went, we're never gonna be able to build in Vermont again. And lo and behold, everybody still can't build in Vermont. Now, getting back to the Act 171, is one of the things that promulgated Act 171 was the partialization of Vermont. And there's some studies done in Fort Worth of 2010 about the, the partialization of Vermont is increasing. The land is being partialized.
You said that two months ago.
Yep. And basically, the state wants us to stop. They want this partialization to stop. And there's, there's, there's a whole list of research and data on what's happened to Vermont. Now, basically, Mount Pilgrim doesn't want us to build anything unless it's in Burlington or Williston. Alright, so that's where the Act 171 came from and all the, these little forest blocks and wildlife corridors.
Which we were required to address.
Which we had to follow. All of this stuff we had to follow, the state dictates us to do in order to get the carrot on the other side, on the other side of the hoop.
Which is to have a town plan that's approved to be given due deference when you're making plans.
Right. So my suggestion is, Al, use the park as a example. Just file an Act 250, just see how it flies, test it. Just test it.
Problem is, if we test it, once Act 250 takes jurisdiction, it's always on that land.
It's always what?
It, it's always.
Then we just say whether we have a plan or not, it's still got to be Act 250.
Right.
Having the town plan has no impact on that. Is that inaccurate?
No, no, I'm saying, if, if you get an Act 250 ruling on a parcel of land, and they take jurisdiction for a project, now they have jurisdiction on that land forever after.
Right, that Act 250 stays with that land.
But my, my question is.
You have to amend it. You can amend it. If you need to.
You can amend it, but they, once they get ahold of it, they always got ahold.
But let's step back, you know, I, I think that to have the vision that we have a consensus on this land use is wonderful, but I doubt it's gonna happen.
Actually, I wonder if we have it, we're just using a different terminology.
I think it's a semantic issue.
I, 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 I would feel much better about the process if whatever was stated in our town plan, we gave it the extra step, the extra effort. I know that the planning commission feels that you've been through this before. But based on the, the spirit of the discussion at the, at the information meeting, and now this issue about the village park, I just think it would be huge, this community, to hash this issue out, get the wording in the town plan about land use based on some relook at that section of the plan, and then go for it.
A little fuzzy in terms of what the next step is in terms of the going for it. In other words, like, we have a meeting in March, would the goal be to say whoever shows up at that meeting, we're gonna change the map based on that one meeting? Should we stretch it out over four months of meetings?
Well, that's really up to you. I mean, I'm, what I'm saying is.
I'm looking for suggestions, business.
What I'm trying to say is on the agenda for the March meeting, have land, have land use. And let's get, let's get working on it as a top priority.
I think it's gonna be on the April one, is what it sounds like to me.
That was my plan, but we'll make a decision tomorrow.
And we're just not that urgent. I'm sorry, this has been going on for two years that we've been having, three years, we've been having meeting after meeting, and publicizing every single one of them, and having minutes out there, and having people after the fact start honing in on, you can't cut down a log, and, which is, multiple people have said, you can't cut down a log on your property without, you know, getting permission from somebody. It, it's not accurate, and I think the better step is to correct people's inaccuracies, get a ruling from the state, have information available to people from experts. And it's just not that pressing that I can't wait one more month. It just isn't that urgent. People are stirred up now, and I think it's fine to put a letter in the Grafton News saying, there's some misinformation out there, we're gonna have this meeting in April, and it just doesn't have to be this emergency.
I don't think it's honoring at this point of view to say it's a misinformed Valerie. I really don't. Were you at the information meeting?
I was at two out of three of the meetings. And I've also been to a zillion extra meetings here trying to get this work done for the last, how many years?
Been a while.
Yes. Every one of which, somebody could have written a letter if they had a concern, could have looked at the minutes, and chose not to. And I think that the majority of the people who are asking me questions haven't actually read the town plan, which is also frustrating, because, well, I heard, well, this says. And I'm like, could you find me that place? And I'd be happy to look at it, and we'd be happy to relook at it. But it's not an emergency, it just isn't.
I beg to differ.
So here you are, one person, saying, but where are all the people who are so concerned?
Well, no, there's two of us, which is, which is actually a hundred percent increase over what you told us, right?
No, we had silly, we had people in and out of here, lots and lots of people.
But if you look at the vote, I forget the exact numbers, but like ninety-five to sixty-six. And there was significant opposition to the town plan, and I believe it was largely centered on this very issue.
And I absolutely wanna address it. There's no question, we need to address it and clarify it. I'm just saying, it just isn't like something that we have to have a special meeting for while we already have a plan in place to address it. With a reasonable timeliness of a month's difference.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm not, I may be misunderstood. I thought that the, the plan that David described was that you were gonna go through transportation, and you were gonna have a, what, maybe, maybe I haven't misunderstood your process. At what point in the process Valerie is describing, would you have gotten to land use?
I'm actually a visual learner, so I'm kinda drawing that out right now.
But we already had a plan to invite people last month to come and address this, because we knew it was an issue. We're not ignoring that it's an issue. I'm just saying, it doesn't have to be the process is, we have to have, like, that gets bumped up ahead of Dave's thought process of, let's do a trial run on one chapter and see if we can make it look like that we wanted to. And then, in the meantime, we have these expert people come, talk to us about it, and do it the right way that's consistent with the way that we came up with the month before.
I think a commitment that you're going to address the map, the land use map, and getting information out, if you're, even if you don't do it until April or May, but if, just to let people know that you are going to address it.
Do you wanna hear from the?
No, no, I'm saying, just write a date down and, and, and let people know, we hear you, we're committed to it, we're working on it, here's our timeline. It doesn't have to be next month.
Another question from both of you in regards to that then. First of all, I'll give you a brief summary of my timeline that I'm playing with here. My plan has been, partially for my own education, I think I know what I'm talking about sometimes. But let's be honest, I know as much as anybody else in this room, and we were kinda playing it week by week sometimes, to get a group of experts in the room and invite as aggressive as we can every Graftonite that can come. And that would include the people that can clarify, and it may be one expert from Act 250, from Mount Pilgrim, get down here and talk, this Yanis person, whoever it is. We talked about local foresters coming, because they're the experts in our region. Obviously, the Wyndham Planning Commission, et cetera. My plan would be to do that at the April meeting, which is the fourteenth. The reason not doing it at the March meeting is to get the largest population here, that would give us lots of time to really get the advertising out. So now let me ask my question following that up. I think if I've not been completely overt about it, I will now, I'm not thrilled about going through what we've gone through in the last year and a half, again, the select board, and now we have this extra piece, which I'll make it clear I voted against, where the whole town votes on it, and what a nightmare it's been. If we were to attack the town plan early, hard, transparently, and as open as possible, and say, there's where we're gonna go, but we're doing the rest of the plan as well before we have one vote, would that be okay? Or should we still have two votes in your mind? Did that question make sense?
Kinda, but I gotta, I gotta lead up question before I answer your question.
The other thing to be aware is, if you open this up, you may not like the map that the community comes up with. Just to be clear on that, you might get some folks out of the woodwork that are directly opposed to your opinion on some of this. And that's a piece you need to be aware of.
I'm completely agnostic about how the map turns out. I am personally completely agnostic about that. And my personal politics are, and I am an extreme supporter of Act 250. I think one seventy-one is fantastic. I want this land protected, I love the woods, I'm a tree hugger. The fact is, though, that my view of, and I don't share the same view as you have, because you've been working on it so long, and, and you're frustrated, I hear your frustration.
We're glad we conducted you, thank you for coming.
No, I really mean it. My, my, I'm gonna be happy when I feel the process has been inclusive. And I'm not, I'm not criticizing the previous process. I'm saying, I think we should take another shot at being inclusive. And if that starts in April, I'm fine with that. I don't know how you feel about it, Al.
What does all this do to your process with Wyndham Regional?
You mean the process?
Well.
Their approval process?
Yeah.
Initially exclusive, no discussion whatsoever, that's nothing to do with each other, from my opinion, unless I'm missing something.
Well, let me finish. So, so you, you got a plan right now, your maps, you got everything. That's the plan that, that's been approved by the voters. That's the plan that you're gonna submit to Wyndham Regional.
You guys are, have already.
Well, it, it's, that's the plan that's going to be submitted.
Correct.
They approve it, we're good. Oh, now we went back, we changed the maps. Not only, not, and so now, not only do we have to, select board, voters, now that has to go back to Wyndham Regional.
One important difference I'll throw at you?
Al, that's a question.
Once our town approved our map at that vote, we now have standing in Act 250. The Wyndham Regional does not have to approve it for us to get standing in Act 250. They only have to approve it for Wyndham Regional Planning, for regional planning grants, and then other potential grants through the A and R and some other municipal community development grants.
Correct.
Thank you.
That's a very important point.
Yeah, we have standing right now, and that plan, if you want to do something now with Act 250 permit, they'll have that plan, whether Regional, Wyndham Regional approves it or not.
But, just to answer my question, so if we do make changes in the future, amendments, maps, whatever we change, that also has to go through Wyndham Regional again?
Yes.
But as soon as you approve it, you have standing with Act 250, whether it's gone through Wyndham Regional or not?
Correct, yes.
And that, that timing is really important.
If my strategy is we have to do their process within two months of when they receive it. So they're in the process of that now.
Okay. So could we punt the decision about one vote or two until we get a little bit farther down the road in looking into the land use in the map? And if we start having a coalescence of, oh, yeah, okay, we're coming to an agreement here of some sort, I'm not defining what that agreement is, I'm just saying if we do come to some kind of agreement, then we could have the vote.
Do you have the minutes from last month easily available? Can I just kind of point out that we addressed this all last month, lest you think that we are being insensitive to this? It was a high priority in my mind that we address people's concerns. And so this is not new news to us. This is why it's very frustrating, we feel like we work, we put out minutes, nobody reads them, and then there's a lot of misunderstandings. And I'm like, okay, so, where, oh, where did we talk about this? Town plan approval, blah, 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 blah.
Well, she's looking, part of this discussion is why I'm so hot on getting the survey done.
Yes.
Is so we can get a true, I mean, I know, and I respect, I'm looking at the camera in case Sam's watching this, I know Sam's opinion, because he's the guy that never missed a meeting for two and a half years.
Yes.
He came here and sat quietly, but he's one vote out of 600. The survey would get us, hopefully, you know, Al, you've been part of it, you've heard the discussion, is, we had a vote on Glen, and some say that wasn't a vote on Wind, it was just on that one project. And this is a survey that will hopefully tell us a more accurate picture.
So we've already been trying to reach out, we've had public meetings, we put out minutes, we, like, I'm not sure what else we can do, other than the survey, which we've been working on, but we can't get any funding for. So without funding, we can't really go forward. But what we said last month was, Dave discussed some of the concerns behind the Navos on the town plan. Much of the concern centered on the land use map and how future land use categories were drawn. Some residents, I'm editorializing, I put in the sum, felt there could be additional scrutiny on how land use categories are considered and how to draw those designations. Discussion followed. The goal is to have a community meeting specifically on the future land use map and categories, and to make changes based upon citizen input. So this is like something, we just spent an hour talking about that we already decided to do last month. Because we also don't want people upset, or feeling they didn't have a voice, despite the fact that they've had multiple opportunities to have a voice, but, so...
So you mean that you're gonna, that, that that's the action item?
That was the action item last month, and this was the follow-up today to talk about, well, are we going to be able to go forward with the surveys part of that, are we going to go forward with the April meeting? I think we went on to talk about trying to have some of these people show up.
Well, I mean, I think it's, I, I, you know, I apologize for not personally reading those minutes before we entered this meeting. But it was not obvious on the agenda that land use was a topic for tonight.
My oversight, I didn't put it out there. So I own that one, without a doubt. I think you're the one that emailed me and said, hey, that was an oversight.
So Dave, how much money do you still have in your budget right now?
I have the budget numbers in front of me, he owes me, I'll bet you a bill, because he always owes me a bill?
Yeah.
For hours, some. And we did put $400 in for municipal planning grants. I know I got 400, it's not a lot, and depending on what we do with his, well, he'll be here through the rest of fiscal year, so that'll probably budget out to zero.
So you, so what you have left in your budget currently, that ends at the end of this fiscal year, you've already committed those dollars, it's not like you got a little money to work with.
The 400 bucks.
They had asked for a 2,000, an additional 2,000 specifically to support the survey, but the Select Board voted against that.
Yes, so when we're trying to get input and we can't get financing to get input, you can see the frustration that arises. Also want to read you the last paragraph in that sentence. Discussion return to the future land use map. Commissioners reviewed names of local regional estate officials who can provide input into the map. Focuses on providing a balance of individuals that can help navigate the competing interests of preservation and development. The goal is to solicit expertise before making changes to the map. So all of this is stuff that we see, we hear.
Well, that's nice, I, I can understand why you're frustrated.
But you know what, we get paid the big bucks to be here, so fucking God, we'll do what we're doing this month.
Yeah, those minutes are great, I wonder who's...
So at five after eight, and we're not to the big meat of the agenda that I want to spend the majority of time on, I, duh, 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 I'm thinking out loud, and that's a little dangerous thing with a camera running. Shut that off for just a minute, while I do some...
It's after eight o'clock, the minute gets after eight o'clock, I get silly, so I'm busted.
Same boat there. We have town meeting on 3/3, we have a scheduled regular meeting on 3/10, and we have another regularly scheduled meeting on 4/14. My plan was to use the 4/14 meeting as a regular meeting, but to invite special guests that are knowledgeable about land use and the laws and the maps and all of that. Does that work? Do you want to try to move that up? Do you not want to try to do that? How do we want to get the community more involved? I know you...
No, he, I'm like, he's looking at it.
That's fine.
We're, we're fine with your proposed schedule. But I have a little clarification before we prove it though, because this thing you sent out today said that Wyndham Regional chose Tuesday, March 6th.
That is for the town plan, it's actually a 5:30 meeting and then a 6 o'clock meeting hearings that they put on. The five, I don't have my notes in front of me, and this is really wrong to do it.
Yeah, but Tuesday isn't a March 6th, this is...
It was 10th.
Oh, I sent you the wrong date.
Corrected it.
Corrected it. March 10th, you got another email?
You sent it correct.
Yeah, two corrections, because like, I'm disoriented.
Sorry, I didn't get those. So I...
March 10th, that meeting is a hearing by the Wyndham to review our present town plan. A half-hour meeting on the town plan, and a half-hour meeting on the energy element specifically, 5:30 to 6:30, and then our meeting starts at 6:30 on that day. Does that make sense?
Yes, but that wasn't what my email said, so I was like, I don't understand what day, or we have month, long day, long, whatever.
Wrong keystroke by Dave.
Okay, so it is the 10th?
Yes, and that's a regularly scheduled meeting of ours at 6:30. 5:30 is when the Wyndham Regional Commission runs two concurrent meetings.
Yeah, there's only so much we can do. And, so I think that makes sense. I probably am going to be late to the Wyndham Regional one, but I'll do my best.
Yeah, I know you, it's hard for you to hear even at the 6:30 timing you said before, so. So, did I hear consensus that we want to have a panel discussion about land use and maps and life in general at the April meeting? Okay? That will mean getting some advertisement out in the Grafton News, maybe a special announcement at town meeting, kind of, at the end to say something when people, community members are allowed to talk. It means Chuck and I, Chuck is still in Retainer till June, getting the people together and committing to that night. So who do we want? I'm going to put down John Bennett, he's already committed.
That's an easy one, because he's...
He loves to come to these things. This...
Yans?
Yans, you know, he...
H.I.L.K.E., Hillkey? How do you say his last name?
It's Scandinavian, so it's unpronounceable. He handles a lot of the biology, the science behind it, but a lot of the comments I've heard to date are really about how the development could be impacted and procedures, so, I mean, he's a good asset to have, for sure, but we really need somebody from Act 250, I think, that'd be willing to speak.
Do they have a kind of front person that does this, or it's kind of, if we're available, we'll find a, I don't know how Act 250 people, there's people, right?
Yes, of course. So if you're talking to them anyway, can you just ask them?
Yeah, who would be a good candidate?
For this date, we want somebody to talk about that.
Yeah, really get to the meat of how Act 250 takes into account local town plans and development review. That's really the meat.
Who else? Act 248 people, or is that a kind of ones you really don't want to go into, because, you know, that's the Wyndham group?
I'd go more towards 171.
Me too.
Yeah, and that goes back to the Yans or...
171.
And anyone who could come that...
That's A and R, maybe?
Yeah, it's A and R. And then that parcellation study was pretty interesting that everyone should understand.
Was that Agency of Community Development or whatever it is, probably that did that one? Or is it A and R?
No, it was A and R.
That was A and R also? And that was a, what did you call it, the, the...
Parcelization.
Parcelization's the word I'm looking for. Who else? I, I, I got tentatively somebody from Act 250, somebody from 171, Wyndham Regional being John Bennett. Do they have a land expert more than John? John's the guy, he's not on the meeting, yeah. Yans, and that's questionable, and I'll re-ask John if it's okay with you, and he's the one that brought it up, and that's why I recommended him.
He's really good, and he'll speak to, you know, the Resource Protection, the reason for that. That actually could be useful, yeah.
Al, you got somebody, you know, we mentioned local foresters, is there others?
State park people?
Well, Hayden Lake is our forester, our town forester.
Those are backyards.
Yep. If you want to get a county forester, who's a state employee rather than a contractor, or a consulting forester, that would be Sam Shineski out of Bradable. Sam Shineski out of Bradable, he's a...
Is he a forester? I think he was a...
Shineski?
Yeah.
He, he's a county forester.
I thought it was Dean, or maybe it's somebody else.
And if you try to encourage discussion, two or three people for it at the most, is really enough real estate assigned to presenting information, but...
To have diverse, but not...
Yeah, you really want to encourage discussion at this certain point.
And I agree with that, I want to make sure I have too big of a list, and rather cut down, are we missing anybody, or is that really...
We'll do it as a panel discussion.
That's my plan is, yeah.
Just, just keep firing information at...
So at the March meeting, I'd like to, by the end of the meeting, finalize a format so these guys don't walk in here blonde, it's got some kind of series of questions or a script that we want them to answer to or something, you know, that kind of thing. In the meantime, I'll, I'll do the invites, and give them the dates so they can block it out, and then get back to you, right?
Do we need to reserve the school?
The school would be, hopefully we do, yes.
Could you think about inviting Dave Ross to be the...
Moderator?
I mean, just the...
He's good at it. The question is then, is it a part of our regular meeting, or do we schedule it separate from the meeting and then have the meeting afterwards? And that may be most appropriate, I think about. How long of a time is needed for the chat hour?
In these meetings, you don't want to be that active, you're there to learn, just to listen, so you, you want no job. The commissioners want to just sit in the crowd and say, we're here to educate ourselves just as much as you want. But I also want to know from the community what their specific concerns are, I looked at the town plan. Yeah, I don't see where it's that restrictive.
Yeah.
You know, other than the critical resource areas where I can see where there's, that can be interpreted.
So we had a survey.
Well, what if we give out index cards at the beginning that anybody can write a question on, and just submit them, they don't even have to sign them, they could just submit them, and then, you know, they could get passed by the moderator to the person who it's most appropriate to ask, or they could take their turn answering it.
How much time is this panel discussion going to take?
It's going to take double two hours, you know it is.
Plus...
You're bad.
The Act 250 coordinator for here is out of the Springfield office, Stephanie Gile.
But it's a local, it's not from Montpelier.
No, she works out of the Springfield office.
Yeah, these are all Springfield folks.
Last name?
Gile, G.I.L.E.
Would that be the person you want to talk to about the original questions once the county meeting's well, or is that a question you just go around?
That's who I've talked to.
She's going to answer?
Yeah. That's 100 mineral street, right? So I'm, I'm in that building five times a week anyways, maybe we'll just go upstairs and say hello.
You're willing, nothing like a little face-to-face.
Do you want her telephone number?
No, actually, I have it, because she, that's where I know her from, in my job, she's been a guest speaker for my horticulture program. Everybody wears multiple hats, that's one of mine. All right, so, right now, it sounds like our plan is, on the 4/14 regular meeting, the agenda item will be a panel discussion, I'm going to get hold of Dave Ross to facilitate it. Potentials are John Bennett, Yans, Stephanie from Act 250, is there somebody, Act 171-ish A and R in Springfield as well?
That's a good one, yeah.
Or that may be a Montpelier person. And obviously Wyndham Regional can answer questions, but sometimes there's distrust because they're all, they're that local group. Somebody directly from A and R would be the voice of absolute horse's mouth, if you will.
He might not be the right person, but he certainly could tell you the right person. Forrest Hammond, he's in Springfield office too.
H.A.M.M.O.N.?
H.A.M.M.O.N.D.
N.D.
He's been around a long time. Frosty.
Okay. We got to reserve the school, make sure that's available.
How, does it have to be the 14th?
No, especially if it's the only agenda item.
Because here's what I, I'm looking at the date.
I would like to lock any, if you bring your calendar, folks, I really don't want to wait until this part.
There's an emergency management director's meeting, which also includes fire chiefs. And the topic that they're going to discuss at the meeting on the 14th in Westminster is the problem that took place down here at Cambridgeport.
I saw a letter from you guys to the governor on that one.
Yeah, so, I would like to hear the presentation there, I know Bill would, and I know Rich will be there, so, I know right off the bat, there's three people that will have to choose.
Give it for tax day, too.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, taxes.
I don't have a problem changing it, I would love to keep it on a Tuesday just because of my life otherwise.
So you have to be careful about school vacation is one of those weeks, and a lot of people will be out of town.
And that's the week following, the 21st is a Tuesday, but that is a vacation week.
If, if it really, it doesn't work to change it, I'll lobby to get the E and D meeting changed.
I'm just suggesting we do the first, I have to do the first one.
This is a regularly scheduled meeting.
Right.
But I'm okay with trying to accommodate everybody if we have this much advanced list. Either you guys have a conflict on either the first Tuesday or the fourth Tuesday?
I would lean towards the first, just because we do it on the fourth Tuesday, and then the following week, we're going to have a planning commission.
That's a, yeah.
The, the, the seventh is the first Tuesday of the month.
Matt, do you have any conflicts normally, like that first Tuesday meeting?
No, no, yeah.
Does Eric have anything?
Don't know. Busy guy, he's going to be getting busy too.
He's busy every night of every month. Crazy, look, I does. When does the Grafton News come out? What day of the month?
As close to the first as you can get it. And so her deadline's usually about the 24th or 25th of each month, first submissions.
So I could get a February 24th thing in, and I could get a March 24th, the March 24th would have an article come out three to five days before the 7th.
If there's a heads up, if there's a heads up in the March one, I think that's okay. You know what I mean? Like, anybody's interested...
I'm not going to write a long article, I'm just going to try to paraphrase and do a...
No, anybody who's interested in talking about the updating the land use section of the town plan, this is when the 10th is scheduled date, that's all they need.
We could also ask Marion Donald if she'd be willing to send out a last email to the WCC, that's usually a very kind of way of communicating.
Well, that's, I'd like to hit all the avenues, make sure, you know, that, I got control over the Grafton Improvement Association website, I'll put it on there.
Let's just put this way, it's going to be our attempt to get as many people here as possible, to get the right information out, and prior to...
Well, and let's be clear, this is going to be an informational thing, not a decision-making thing. Because then in May, we're probably going to need another, maybe more contentious meeting about, let's make some decisions about this.
It's also information that we...
And then you get off the board.
Yes, we say. It's also information that we need to know for town meeting day. And everyone needs to know that, that we're going to be having informational...
Yeah.
Meeting on all this, so it's kind of moved up until town meeting day, as far as I'm concerned.
Is there a time during pre-town meeting that somebody could make an announcement, and then a town meeting also?
Sure, sure, I got to do this, ask the moderator.
Yeah, at the end of the town meeting, you read your hand, see where you are.
Is anybody, either of you guys going to be able to go to pre-town meeting, that you could do that?
I go to that.
Presumably, yeah, okay. Okay. And a town meeting, too?
Maybe Ross would be moderating.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, would you be willing to stand up one of you guys and just make that announcement? You know, when there's a lot of bodies around, you might not complain of things.
Absolutely, yeah, all right. Do we have clarity? Do we have consensus? Do we have a plan for that piece?
I think so, if those guys are available. If they're not, then we're going to have to revisit another date, that's all.
When you need to, don't make your change, Al. For the E and D?
Yeah.
I don't call that meeting, so...
Who called it?
Alicia Savato from Wyndham Regional, she's an emergency lady, and she's the one that puts it together, but it's, it's open to all the fire chiefs and emergency management directors in Wyndham County, so it affects a lot of different people.
Although obviously your presence is incredibly important, I would...
Never been before.
No, I'm not saying we listen to you, but having you here is nice. Camera's running still. I will remind you that this is an informational meeting, and if you really can't make it...
Well, true, true.
You know, it will not negate you from giving your opinion when that point comes available, if that makes sense. available, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
We're not gonna be collecting information at this, at least, that's not what I'm hearing at this time.
I mean, it's already a ten minutes, but... Will it, will it be recorded, so I can watch it if I...
I can request a recording? How does that work? I mean, you come here magically all the time.
Yeah, you should, Bill, to put it on the agenda.
Okay, so make sure that Fact TV...
As long as Alex and Ed could go call me. Definitely more if it's not on the agenda.
Well, it's, it's a regularly scheduled meeting, so you'll be there, right? So, yeah, it will be by default.
But it'll be a different location. It'll be at the school, right? Or it'll be here.
And I will email you, I got your email to remind you of that, but it'll be at the school with the host, it'll be a higher, first we gotta make sure the room's available, but if it is, hopefully a higher attendance.
You have connections, either.
Yeah, you don't listen to me.
So are we gonna have another meeting that month, or April?
So if this issue is sucking all the options, and we wanna still continue with other things, we might need to?
You could leave the second one on, and we could see how, you know, we could always cancel it, because we still have the regular second Tuesday. I just, I can't, like, work nights and keep coming to, like, nighttime meetings, it's just...
So if this meeting's on the 7th, we don't have to call a meeting to order and take minutes, or do we for this on the 7th? Is, is that considered?
That's your choice, yours is a special meeting?
We're not gonna make decisions.
There's posting.
And we're gonna advertise it, and we'll, I guess we'll post it that way as well.
Chris, this is a gray area, if you're just having an informational meeting on a topic, it's hosted by the, if there's a quorum there, then we would...
The select board's gonna have a quorum too.
Yeah.
Because they're interested in showing up.
It's only we're gonna discuss it, and we're not gonna discuss it.
We can call it a meeting, I don't care, we just, you know, got together, heard a bunch of people talk, adjourned.
That's right, yeah.
And maybe that's safer, and we'll just do it that way, and it's on the record, and we can go from there. All right, so it is a regular meeting, I think the last thing I remember for adjourned is, if I understood your suggestion, I like it, is let's decide then whether we need another meeting. Because we do have one in March, that might dictate whether we need that next one as well, so let's not make that decision yet. I'm tired, how's everybody else doing?
Bernie Sanders has 29%.
Yeah, he's correct. Next meeting?
So our next meeting is on 3/10. I don't have an agenda for that, but I do plan on putting land on that in some form, because the town plan is on every single agenda by default. I think we ought to have, I'm not saying we will, but it might be worth having that on the agenda to refresh our memory, to have a precursor discussion, invite the public as well, and maybe get some community input pre that kind of thing. We'll go from there. I see no reason at this time to deal with the roads piece. I have a whole bunch of notes, but that'll be for the next meeting, I'd still like to go with that. Village Center, we already talked about. So there's nothing for that community survey. The only weird I thought I had after the water committee talks about pulling just water questions out, because it's appropriate for that time, do we pull just the land questions out and throw it at the community between town meeting and the...
Good question.
That meeting, and then have data points?
Wow.
And the other one? I'm not saying it's a good idea, that's not what I'm saying.
Well, that would separate it out a little bit, we could do...
And all of a sudden, we have a series of smaller surveys that are geared towards specific topics.
Economy, energy.
I got next week off, and my wife's going out of town for a week. I'm gonna spend the time looking at the town survey, and I hope by the end of the week to send you a draft that might be good enough in land only to collect some information. I don't know how you wanna proceed with that, because we do not have a meeting between now and town meeting, so let me give that some thought, because I think that would be a really interesting data point to collect as part of this. Maybe the thing to do is say, no, we're gonna do that piece in May after the community survey, and we have just the town land piece ready for that. That might be another way to go. Because then you're answering that with a little bit of background information as well. I'm still thinking out loud, and the camera's still running.
We still need to figure out how we're disseminating it, and whether it's electronic, mail, or both.
And like I say, next week I got some time off, and I can think about this week. Honestly, I, my brain's in a, I have a hundred other places.
I'm stuck with the few, so feel free to...
Can I touch base with you at the very end with just like three suggestions?
As many as you've got. You got my master copy on that. I can send you a PDF of that, I, I mean, this is, the select board all have a copy, I send out their ugly drafts, but this has my working notes, so let's hold off on that, and we'll do that. I'll get back to you on the community survey piece. I got new business here, we better get new business done, this one's yours.
Suzanne, wanna add our survey to our next meeting, too, or?
Yes.
Yeah.
We need to nominate a, oh, sorry, a, a new town administrative officer, that is a technical title, which is different than the town administrator, correct? Correct. That's where my confusion keeps running into. For the development review board, we've gotta nominate somebody to the select board, and then the select board votes on approving of that person. I will open the floor to nominations this time.
I nominate Bill Kearns.
I have a nomination for Bill Kearns, do I have a second? Do I need a second, Matt? Anybody?
You technically don't need a second in a small group, but I have some mixed feelings about that.
We have a line here, because we don't wanna talk about people in open meeting because of personality.
I know. I didn't say anything else.
Do you have alternative people in mind?
No.
Okay. How do you wanna proceed with this uncomfortable position?
Yes.
Would that be more powerful?
What's an interim mean? I know the term, but what are you talking about? A month, a year?
Acting, well, it's not determined, but...
Interim, I don't know. Because clearly you need somebody.
We do.
I got that.
Probably someone in-house that's accessible.
I'd like to know who else might be interested and apply, and what their qualifications are, I guess, you know what I mean?
That could take a while, though, so we need to have...
So I agree, yeah, I agree with you, in the short run, I'd be, if you wanted, were willing to entertain, like, the, a motion to, like, amend that to interim, I would be happy to support it.
And would that put the ball in our court to do a job description in an advertisement thing?
I don't know.
And then the best candidate, which may be Bill, then becomes permanent unless somebody else better applies? Is that, what do you think in there?
I don't know, we could say three months, six months, something, you know, for a six month.
But we gotta advertise if we're looking for an applicant, I'm not advertised for it, so. How do you advertise for something like that? Craigslist?
Why don't you ask Chuck, who, what he, he would envision qualifications that person, a person, would need to fill that role.
Chuck, and that's part of the advertisement, I've got a stock advertisement we can use. As soon as you guys are ready, I'm gonna be a very strong advocate for the position, it's a really, whether it's Bill or anybody, it doesn't matter.
Now, we're talking about the ERB position now, not your position.
Yeah, but you might keep them combined, as has been in the past before, that might be your choice.
Well, it's their choice ultimately, I'm bulletproof.
Could you just shed some light as to the kind of person or the qualification?
Yeah, what are the tasks, knowledge that requires this position?
Land use law helps, administration, just stick more for detail.
What about planning?
Planning does help, yes.
Is there cadre, are you folks just sitting out there, or how's that? No?
No, no.
Not really.
Yeah, when Bill asked me many years ago, it was kinda like, we need somebody, you know, don't say no. We are cross-pollinated, so people from the planning profession, the lawyers come in, you know, it's, it's different, you know, people will do the work. It may be the case, and I'm just speaking aloud here at a late hour, but that you wanna keep it combined so that you have enough hours to make it worthwhile for a candidate who is doing the town plan and, and the administration, so...
Yeah, and I would say the one exception is if one of the two happen to be, well, if they both happen to be locally, yeah. With Bill, he doesn't have a problem doing one and not the other, because it's locally, but to find somebody to do the other, that may be a reason to bundle it.
I in hopes, you know, the fact that Bill's willing to do the work is great, but if you're looking for planning support, you know, one of the regional planners may be able to take this on as a side task, you know, but I don't know if there's necessarily a conflict there, but, yeah, if you have a total package and a number of hours that you could put together for one candidate, that gives you options.
What do you think about, if you're talking to John Bennett anyway, asking him, like, do they have a job description for such a thing, and a list of people who might be qualified in their area?
I asked him about a list of people, and he laughed and said, we don't keep the list like that handy.
Uh-huh.
Smore ass than he is. But he said, you can ask around, the one thing he did bring up was Marion Niedr, and I emailed her, and she said no.
She said no?
She said, no, I'm getting a new job, and I really need to focus on that for now and make sure I got my act together with housing authority, where's she going? She's leaving the Wyndham Regional.
Okay.
And she's got a job with the housing authority or something.
I have someone who lives in Saxeterre who actually works with the Wyndham Regional now. I'd like to ask her, see if she'd be interested.
But we, we need to have an interim on the ground now, because we've got a pending, already scheduled hearing on the 27th, and...
And so, what I've heard is a motion to nominate...
So I can amend the motion to nominate Bill Kearns as interim or acting administrative officer.
And, and do you wanna put some kinda timeline, like for a maximum of three months, or until we find somebody better, or how do you wanna?
Yeah, I don't wanna limit ourselves, because there's no guarantee of people's availability, so...
Yeah, how about pending, advertising, developing a job description and advertising? Because that gives us an open-ended thing, that it describes why it's interim, so that we have a fair, open, transparent application process, and look for the best qualified person, whoever that might be.
Okay.
The person that popped into my head, I think would be the perfect person, I'll take it more, I won't mention the name, but...
Well, so...
I got a job description, I could hand it to her, and she's got perfect connections right with Wyndham Regional. She's there every day.
But I'm only gonna support his motion and then, as amended, so I'll send it over.
Okay, more discussion on this one? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so, so Al will send an email formally to Joe and let Chris know that that's the way we'll word it, and we'll go from there, I guess, all right?
You and I can become email buddies to get something, suitable format to then send to Matt.
And to be clear, I'm using your, was it Wise Family or something?
Yes.
Okay, that's the one I'll, I put my contact as number one from now on.
Perfect.
Okay.
You sort of think the drop talks have been over?
I can't get anything out of there. Can you go back to emailing them, too?
Okay.
And we're gonna have to transition.
My account's not reading it anymore.